The stages since the lights are bright, Kennedy's ready for the fight. Voices love and hate me stand, who will lead this from a plan? Promises flying hearts ignite, truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice, will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Words are weapons, wielded strong debates get heated right around, they paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows blame your truth or spin the battle ages from within. One by one, they speak their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Who, who, we'll see. Promises flying hearts ignite, truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice, will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Words are weapons, wielded strong debates get heated right around, they paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows blame your truth or spin the battle ages from within. One by one, they speak their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025?
And the...
The stages since the lights are bright, Kennedy's ready for the fight. Voices love and hate me stand, who will lead this from a plan? Promises flying hearts ignite, truth and lies will take the mic. The clock is ticking, make your choice, will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Words are weapons, wielded strong debates get heated right around, they paint the town with visions bold. Who will rise to a fold? Shadows blame your truth or spin the battle ages from within. One by one, they speak their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Who, who, we'll see. Promises flying hearts ignite, truth and lies will take the mic. The stages since the lights are bright, Kennedy's ready for the fight. Voices love and hate me stand, who will lead this from a plan? Promises flying hearts ignite...
Good evening, Wainui Amata. And today, with the one and only election that Wainui Amata personally gets to vote in, we've got the Wainui Amata Community Board and these candidates are here to put their feet to the It's in the Ballot fire. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. And good evening and welcome to tonight's It's in the Ballot show for the Wainui Amata Community Board. Let's kick it all off with Al on your one-minute opening statement of why you should receive one of the six ticks to be on the Wainui Amata Community Board.
Kiorakauta katoa, my name is Al Abel and I'm standing for the Wainui Community Board because I care about our people, our families, our tamariki and our kamataas and the everyday residents who make this such a special place to live. I didn't grow up here, but I chose Wainui as my home because it has heart, a place where people look out for each other and want the best for their neighbours. But I also know that not everyone in this community always feels seen or supported. As someone who lives with invisible disabilities and as a parent of children with them too, I understand the barriers families face. That's why I advocate for children who fall through the cracks, for parents doing their best with limited support and for people who are often made to feel invisible. If I'm elected, I will bring the same fierce advocacy to the Community Board because Wainui Amata deserves leadership that truly listens and acts for its people.
And next up, we've got Nikki.
Kiorakauta, my name is Nikki. I'm a mum of two, raising my family here in Wainui Amata. And like many of you, I care deeply about what happens here in our community because it's where we live our lives every day. Over the years, I have supported whanau through initiatives like the Tiawa Kai Rangi School Stationery Drive. I've served on the Wainui Amata Primary School Board and I co-chair Love Wainui Amata. In each of these roles, my focus has been the same: listening, bringing people together and finding practical, locally-led solutions. Wainui Amata is the second largest suburb in the Hut Valley and as our region grows and faces major infrastructure and planning challenges, we can't afford to be lost in the noise. I'm standing to make sure our voice is strong, our needs are heard and our future is shaped by us, not for us.
Okay, next up, Nohor Kaia.
Tini vetu kita rangi rangi tani kita fenua, ko Nohor Kaia nga au. I bring with me a diverse range of skills from a variety of different mahi that I've done over the years, so experience on governance boards. I've worked with charitable trusts, I've raised thousands of dollars for the Breast Cancer Society. I also bring with me a values-based approach. So I'm Maori and I draw a lot from my lived experiences and I'm a big believer in those values like whakapono, kotahitanga, whanoungatanga being key skills needed for those who represent Wainui Amata. And I think that those are skills that anybody would want from any community. I'm also an experienced toastmaster, so I bring with me 15 years of professional speaking at all sorts of levels. And I think that's key. When we think about the Community Board, the Community Board is there to advocate for Wainui Amata and I'd love to have the opportunity to be able to use those skills.
Okay, and Daniel.
Kia ora, all right, so why should you vote for me? Well, I've got the experience, I am very much who I am. My matches, my life's led me to learn from others. I just think I am very genuine about that. Yeah, I can keep you informed, I think that's a cute role of a community board where I advocate for my large community. But yeah, I don't actually give you an opportunity to say something and then do it. Or obviously if you want something, you can come along. I have the initiative and the experience and I think that's key in our role. I can speak up and advocate. And I've worked, experienced working for council for a few years. So I understand how council operate, I understand the law of governance and justice and etcetera. And obviously I've been involved in the Whanau Council as well. So I understand all that, so I would love to develop a few more to do.
Yeah, and sorry if things take a little bit longer if I switch on the cameras. Our stream deck decided to, decided to... Yep, decided not to sit down there and play ball today. So that's the fun part that goes in there. So with community boards, we'll get to the box questions now. The principle behind community boards is to have candidates to work as a team. So we're going to go one by one to the candidates to pick a box number, but we get all of them to answer the questions and work together as collaborative team. So Al, between one and nine, which box number would you like me to grab?
Nine.
Nine? Oh, sorry, nine. It's all right. Okay, we've got question A for Alpha. Do you support political party endorsements of local government candidates, why or why not? Sorry.
We can totally answer.
Sorry, I've screwed up there and I'm sorry, my computer spat out needing a password for me to... So what's happened is here, I've loaded the graphics in, but I've got the wrong key on the string deck. Okay, let's get to A. Sorry, that was my mistake. I should know that because that is the one about street names. What will be your preference for new street names to be based on in the Wainui Amata Community Board area? We're very sure, you've got to have something go wrong. Yes.
Okay. For me, the starting point for new street names in Wainui Amata should always be names gifted by a local iwi, honouring Maori history, stories and Rio connects us to the land and reflects our unique identity. I believe that it's an important part of building a community that respects its roots. Alongside that, I'd like to see strong community consultation so residents feel proud of the names chosen. That might mean recognising local history, important places or people who have contributed to Wainui Amata, whether that's former mayors, community leaders or unsung heroes who have made a real difference here. What matters most is that the names reflect who we are as a community, our past, our present and the future we're building together.
Okay, Nikki.
Sure, so very much like Al, my preference is for our street names to be truly reflective of our community. So it's history, it's people, the things that make Wainui Amata unique. I understand there are some quite formal processes around naming roads and you know, you have to get approval from sort of central government organisations. But that shouldn't mean that we're limited to a small set of generic choices. I'd like to see us actively gathering ideas from the community so that when the time comes for naming new streets, we've got a living list of names that we can draw from. Maybe that's that they've been gifted by local iwi or they're inspired by our local figures. So yeah, when the time comes, we have options that have meaning and that have come from the community.
And Nohor Kaia? Kaia, Kaia, Nohor Kaia. I don't know why I want to do that, there's a town near Bunny Fork that my brain automatically wrongly corrects to.
Kia ora, so I pretty much support what's already been said. I'm a big believer in the names of streets reflecting the local history and definitely names that have been gifted by Tia Tiaua, who are the mana fenua here, as well as names that reflect the people who've contributed and shaped Wainui Amata. So people like Nanny Henry, Ada Maxwell, who taught at the country's first Ko Hangareo Pukiaata, Papa Ihaakara Puketapu, who passed away a couple of years ago. He founded the Ko Hangareo Movement alongside many others. So I think that any street names that we do have here should reflect our community and what we'd like to see for our community.
And Daniel.
Yeah, I don't want to talk too much more ahead. The council does have a street naming policy, which is to try to follow as much as possible. Check, check. That's all right, I don't need the whole minute. Not much more to add really. The council does have a street naming policy which they try to adhere to as much as possible. And again, that includes iwi engagement and suggestions. However, if residents have suggestions about names that mean something to them, then we as a board will definitely look at that and consider it. So yeah, it should be driven by the naming policy but also the community desires as well.
Okay, let's get on to box number two. Nikki, what box number would you like?
Let's go with five.
Five. Okay, and we have D for Delta, as they call it in the phonetic alphabet. How willing are you to work with local hapu and iwi at a community board level?
Sure, for me though, this is a really no-brainer question. I'm really willing, I see it as an essential part of doing this role well. For me, I want to build genuine partnerships. So that means engaging respectfully in ways that iwi and hapu want to and build relations that are grounded in mutual respect and shared aspirations. I don't think that it's really for the Community Board to dictate the terms of what a partnership looks like because that's not really how you build truly collaborative partnerships. It's recognising that both parties bring knowledge and experience and strength to the table. That way we can achieve more when we're sharing and working together. So my approach is to listen first, learn and work alongside iwi and hapu towards outcomes that benefit everyone.
Okay, Nohor Kaia.
Well, hapu and iwi are part of our community and if we weren't willing to work with them, then what are we doing? Representing the community on the community board. So I'm absolutely a big supporter of working with them, especially to realise shared dreams, shared outcomes, the best for our community. That's what we would want. And I think that hapu and iwi have some really great ideas when it comes to things like preserving our history, looking after the tāia, the environment. And I think that working together would be fantastic for the benefit of all of us here in Wainui.
Daniel.
Dito, yeah, how willing would I be to engage with them? Totally willing, yep, simple.
And Al.
I'm very willing and committed, shall I start again? I'm very willing and committed to work with local hapu and iwi in the community board level. I believe our community is strongest when we listen and learn from the knowledge, history and perspectives of our tana tufenua. Sorry if I said that wrong. I would approach this with respect, openness and a genuine desire to build strong, ongoing relationships. It's about collaboration, ensuring that their voices are heard in decision-making and that we work together on projects and initiatives that benefit the whole community. I see this as a partnership where we share ideas, acknowledge cultural significance, create outcomes that reflect the values and inspirations of everyone in our community. I am fully committed to working hand-in-hand with hapu and iwi to ensure our community thrives together.
And Nohor Kaia, what box number?
Three.
Three. Now do it, and now we've got I for iwi. How can the community board contribute to civil defence and emergency management in our area?
I think for me, the community board is like the bridge between the literal community that we serve and civil defence and other mechanisms that have been put in place to ensure that we're all safe if there's a disaster of any kind. And I think what would be really good to see is collaborative mahi between the community board and our local marae because I do know there are other marae around the country that do turn themselves into civil defence centres when things happen and we know that it's a local place that we can all access, they have the facility. So knowing what we have in our community is really, really important, especially when it comes to things like civil defence. We also know that Cornini Primary School is a civil defence centre. So if we know where all of these places are, then we can help facilitate that knowledge, especially if a disaster happens.
Okay, Daniel.
Kia ora, yeah, community board contributing to civil defence, really important. I think the biggest role we can have is, it's kind of like Nohor was saying, that we should be the connection between the council and the community, the grassroots, the marais, the schools, the community groups, the volunteers. Obviously, we have Remo, we have EOCs, we have a whole bunch of organisations that run it and operate it. But in terms of engagement on the ground, we should definitely be included in that consultation and engagement from the council and regional council and government. So, yep.
Okay, Al.
The community board plays an important role in supporting civil defence and emergency management in Wainui Amata by connecting the community with resources, information and preparedness initiatives. Having experienced civil defence myself, I understand how crucial it is for residents to know what to do and where to go and how to access support during emergencies. If elected, I would work to strengthen the communication and awareness through local workshops, community meetings and clear information online and in local hubs. Although we've only got one here. I would also advocate for preparedness plans and consider the needs of our most vulnerable, including tamariki, our older residents and people with disabilities. By combining my civil defence experience with community engagement, I want to help Wainui Amata feel prepared, supported and resilient in the face of any emergency. And in saying that, we need to be more prepared because when Kaikora happened, we had no supermarkets and that got completely ruined. So we need to make more plans, I think, as a board, if elected.
Okay, Nikki.
Kia ora, so this is a subject that I'm really passionate about and it's an area that I work in day-to-day, natural hazard resilience. And as other candidates have said, the community board can play a really important role in building relationships across community because when we are in an emergency scenario, it's relationships that are going to be key to how we move through those situations. Just recently, in the work that I do at the Wainui Amata Primary School, we organised a reunification drill and that was a really important step in understanding both what the school would do in a scenario where we might have to close, but also engaging parents in thinking about what they would have to go through if they could not get home to Wainui Amata. We know that in any given day, 30,000 people are travelling over the Wainui Amata Hill. So we might not be at home when something happens, so readiness is really important. I see that the community board can collaborate with Remo, with civil defence, with schools to strengthen our readiness. And I just wanted to plug, I saw something that happened in the South Wadapa recently where South Wadapa Council, Remo, some other community groups collaborated on making grab bags for kamatawa. And I thought that was such a great initiative and it's something that we could easily remodel and adapt for the Wainui Amata context to make sure that we're looking after our most vulnerable.
Okay, Daniel, what box number?
Five left?
No, that's already... I suppose the heads, yeah, the heads have been taken, Nick?
We've got six then.
Number six. Okay, we've got H for hill, unless you can find me a suburb in Lahut that starts with H. How accessible is the current community board and what steps would you take to improve its accessibility?
Very good question, I'm on the current community board. So yeah, I think we'd be as accessible as we can. I think it's important for the public to know that for a lot of us, this is on top of a full-time job. And so it's the time dedication that we can actually realistically give is much less than, say, a councillor. But that being said, you know, we need to be accessible. So for me, it's full-time work and being a dad and those things take priority at the end of the day. Family first for me. But you know, I'm unapologetic with that. You know, so we need to increase our accessibility, we need to be out there in the community already. And I think most of our candidates are, they're on groups, they're helping with coaching, they're helping with volunteer groups. So I think the nature of the role requires you to be involved with the community already and be willing to be even more accessible if needed, yep.
Okay, Al.
Right now, the community board is not as accessible as it could be. Many people only hear from the board if they attend meetings. And while there is a Facebook page, it isn't widely used or engaged in for the whole community. If elected, I would work to change that by being more visible and approachable. I would hold regular community clinics and visit local events and make sure information is available through the local paper, online channels and in our library, our community hub. I would also like to encourage two-way communication so people can raise ideas, issues and ideas without having first come to formal meetings. My goal is to make the board more approachable, visible and responsive to all of Wainui, to all of Wainui Amata feels heard and connected and not just those who attend meetings.
Okay, Nikki.
Sure, so I think Hut City has taken a lot of positive steps towards making meetings and its members more accessible. You know, I know that meetings are held at different times, you live-stream your meetings, information is shared on the council website and through social media. But what I've learned in this process so far is that there are still large parts of the community who don't know where to start when it comes with engaging with council and even that we have a community board. For working parents who are time-poor, engagement is low and that raises an important question, are we truly accessible to everyone and therefore are we representing all parts of the community? I think we need to think about who is missing out and how we can reach them. We could explore collaborating with schools to run parent drop-ins, we could run sessions inside schools with tamariki and rangatahi and we could be present at major community events. One thing I've been thinking about is Ulaalei and the soccer and touch tournament that they run in the summer. Hundreds of parents are attending that event. If we had an ability to meet parents there, what would that look like? And yeah, how would that transform accessibility?
Okay, Nohor Kaia.
I think like everybody else has said, you know, we could do better. Meetings could be moved around depending on what the timetable looks like because I know that they're scheduled throughout the year. You know, we can connect, we have a local high school here, we have the marae. So there are different places, both are accessible venues for people with disabilities. So it wouldn't be too difficult to enter in and out of those buildings. Live streaming, utilising that as a resource. And I guess when we think about the future, hopefully one day we could have things like sign language interpreters, we can have captions on recorded meetings and things like that if we're specifically talking about accessibility for people who are hard of hearing or you know, those types of things. And in terms of like local events and stuff like that, absolutely. It would be great to see the community board out in those types of events so that we can connect with the people that might not always be able to come to meetings.
Okay, and let's toss up the order in the opposite direction. Daniel, what box number?
Well, two numbers at once, seven?
Seven.
Is that still available? We'll find out.
I can't remember. It's all right, there's only nine cards in the box.
There's only nine, we all don't remember 28 this time, do we? Like the poor councillors.
Okay, we've got C for Charlie. How will you stand for the community at the council table on issues where the council is not in support of them?
Yeah, really important, I think. Again, community boards should be grassroots, community engaged, the essentially kind of middleman between community and council. So it's important to understand, I guess from a public perspective, that we're limited by our delegations, so we don't really get a vote at the council table. However, this coming triennium, we will have two councillors on our board, which is our local ward councillor and our Maori ward councillor. So we can connect to the table through them. And so it's really important that we keep up communications with them and when we disagree with the direction that the council is going, that we make that really clear, that we as a board do or do not support this based on what we've heard from the community and the residents. So yeah, I'm no stranger to speaking up and rocking the boat a little bit when needed, respectfully and politely. But yeah, so it's really important that we keep that communication up.
And Nohor Kaia.
Well, at the end of the day, we're the voice of the community and so like Daniel said, you know, we have two councillors that will be sitting at the board table so we can really utilise that opportunity to lobby them and to speak up about issues that are affecting Wainui Amata. We can look at what powers we do have and operate within that. But I think also too, it's important to know that we are the voice and there's a reason why there is a community board and so we need to really, really utilise the skills that we have. I think, you know, for all of the experience that I've had in this world over the last 10 years, I've worked in a lot of different situations where I've had to speak up and I've had to advocate for a group of people. So for me, those are things that are really, really easy. So thinking ahead into the future, if I was elected on the board, then I would utilise those skills and yeah, work with our community and work with the councillors that are there.
Nikki.
Yeah, so I agree with both of the candidates have spoken. Our responsibility is to stand for community always. And I think that it's okay to be in disagreement. I think disagreement is a healthy part of democracy and council need to hear it. And so it would mean that I would be bringing evidence-based, community-driven positions to the table, even if they don't align with council's view or direction. I think it's really important that community see us doing that because they have entrusted us with carrying their voice. It's important that we walk the talk and not just pay lip service to, you know, speaking for the community. So yeah, I'm prepared for those tensions. I think that's how you build really good trust, by showing up, speaking up and making sure the voice of Waino Amaata is loud and clear.
Al.
Can you just clarify, what's question number? What number is it?
C.
Sorry, no, just checking, thank you.
That's all right.
Standing for the community at the council table means being their voice, even when the council's position doesn't align with theirs. So I'm agreeing with everyone else who's saying. I would start by fully understanding the community's concerns and gathering facts and clearly presenting their perspectives in a respectful and persuasive way. And I have done this through submissions and other things into other committees and stuff and advocated as well. I would ask questions, explore alternatives and advocate for solutions that reflect their needs while remaining constructive and professional. It's about persistence and making sure the issues are heard, documented and considered, even if immediately agreement isn't reached. I'd also like to keep the community informed, showing transparency in the process so they know that their concerns have been championed. Ultimately, standing for the community is about commitment and integrity and ensuring their voice is never lost, no matter the council starts.
And Nohor Kaina, what box number?
I'm trying to think of what the numbers are.
One to nine, but I've not been... Eight? Eight, yeah. Actually, that one, I don't believe we've done. I think it's all been odd numbers. Okay, we've got G for... I, yeah, no, Gulf. The name that was about to come ahead would have us blacklisted off YouTube or have demonetised. What would your role entail in overseeing the planning, regulation and implementation of traffic, parking, signage and related policies, including community consultation processes?
I think the important thing here to know is that we don't get to make the final call. We can make suggestions after all the council are the ones that oversee all of those things. But what we can do is utilise our meetings to find out about, to talk about proposed changes so that the community that we're serving know, hey, look, this is what's happening, what are your opinions about it? When I went out canvassing, there were a lot of members of the community who were, for example, anti-speed bumps, but they didn't know that they could come to the Community Board meetings and voice those opinions. They thought that they just needed to talk directly to the council. So I guess when we think about those types of things, we need to bring those to our meetings and also find other ways to connect with the community who aren't able to come along and voice their opinions.
Okay, Nikki.
Yeah, similarly to Nohor Kainga, acknowledging that this is quite a regulated space and different aspects of traffic and parking are managed by different levels of government and, you know, we don't get to make a final call. I see the Community Board's role in this as very much in the consultation space, helping community raise problems or needs up through the council chain and then also making sure that if government are proposing changes, that these flow back down through, for community input. Our job is to keep the local voice strong in the process, meaning that we are linking people to the right parts of council or government, making sure that concerns are heard in the right places and then following up so that community voice isn't lost as things move through processes. It's about being a bridge in both ways and ensuring that decisions are shaped by the people who live with them daily.
Al.
Okay. As a Community Board member, my role in traffic, parking, signage and related issues is to resonate the community's needs and provide input to the council. But that means considering how proposals affect tamareki, older residents, people with disabilities and everyday commuters. Community consultation would be central and I would engage residents through surveys, community meetings, talking with local groups and online feedback and drop-in sessions and making sure the council hears what people actually need, not just what's on the paper. I'd also advocate for clear communication and follow-up, helping ensure any changes are implemented safely and effectively. My goal is to amplify the voices of Waino Amaata and make sure community needs are front and centre in every council decision and also too, that we work with the council and councillors and we also work with the regional council and central government as needed.
Daniel.
Cool, I'll try and keep it quick and simple actually. So this question does describe, I guess essentially, the job of our transport team, who will, you know, be the technical experts. And so shout out to them, our council staff who do a great job day in, day out and often don't get a lot of thanks, they just get complaints. So yeah, council officers are expected to be the technical experts on this kind of stuff and I'll generally respect that. Our role is really to vote on their recommendations and those votes, that recommendation then goes to the traffic subcommittee and then to the council. So what's important, and I'll also shout out someone else here, which I normally wouldn't do, to our local councillor, Kerry Brown, through the Maru Streets for People project. It was quite clear that there were some residents not happy with the final result and that was constantly noted at our board meetings. And I don't know if it actually got listened to at the council level. So that's kind of even more important. Vote for councillors you think will genuinely listen to your boards and to the community voices.
And Nohor Kaina?
I'm pretty sure I just, did I?
Did you start there?
I answered first, I'm pretty sure.
Sorry. I'm having a sleepy moment. I was gonna say, I can't sit there and stay here, so I'll call us, I might film someone. So I think a sleepy, sleepy, sleepy moment. Nikki.
I have also answered the question. So would you like me to choose another box number?
Yes, yes, that's, yes. You're doing my job.
Yeah, I would love box number two.
Box number two. Okay, we've got B for Bravo. How would you stand up for your community interests if it differs from your own position?
Cool. Yeah, I think, you know, we're all human and we all see things from different perspectives. We've all had different lived experiences. And I think, you know, the fact that we all come from different places is part of what makes our community really strong. In my advocacy work with Love Waino Amaata, we've made submissions on a wide range of issues on different council consultations and we've always made sure that those submissions are grounded in community views and even when they differ to my own personal views. So I put them forwards, I put community views forwards because the role isn't about representing myself, it's about representing the community and the different people that make community. So for me, that means actively gathering a wide range of perspectives, listening and being willing to put my personal views on hold when it's needed, even when it's not the easiest or most comfortable thing to do. So yeah, carry the voice of community because that's the job and that's how we build trust.
Okay, Al.
I believe representing the community means putting the people first, even when their views may be different from my own. My role is to listen carefully, understand the full range of perspectives and weigh up what will best serve the majority in the long-term well-being of our community. Where there are differences, I'll be open and transparent and explaining my own history, my own position honestly, sorry. But making sure I advocate strongly for the voices I represent, it's about building trust. People need to know their concerns are heard and represented, not just when it's convenient. At the end of the day, my responsibility is to be a bridge between differing views and ensuring decisions reflect the community's priorities, not just my personal ones. That's how I'll stand up for the community, by putting people first, always.
Okay, Daniel.
Kia ora. Camera, hello. I'm waiting for the camera. One of the candidates pointed out, I'm the only one showing my legs tonight. Right. So this question is good, stand up for the community if it differs to my own position. I've already done this. If you don't know me, my day job is a cemeteries manager. It's an area that I'm really passionate about and I've spoken to the council many, many times at different meetings as a resident, specifically because I didn't have lots and lots of residents talking to me as a board member, so I spoke as a resident on that issue. However, it then came full circle and I helped a local resident in Komatuwa who wanted to talk to me about this issue and I helped him start a petition about the cemetery issue that there is no burial plots in Lai Hut. So I'm very honest and have integrity. I will always speak as a resident when it's my concerns, but if it's concerns I hear from residents, I will very clearly say this is what the residents are saying.
And Nohor Kaina?
I think the question's already been answered well enough by all the other candidates, but I just wanted to point out again, you know, I'm there to represent the community and their voice and what they need and I see myself and all of the other candidates or all of the other members of the Community Board as that bridge between the community and wherever else we need to advocate for them. So I think it's really important that whoever you elect to the Community Board remembers that, that you are there to represent the community, that you can draw from your own lived experiences, your own ideas, but at the end of the day, you have to go with what the community is wanting.
Okay, and Al, what box number?
I'll have box number one, so I don't think it's gone.
Oh, I'll believe you on that one. Okay, and we have F for Fairfield. What factors currently support community gardens in your area and what actions could be taken to improve or create new ones?
Community gardens in Waino Amaata are supported by local interest, volunteer commitment in existing spaces that provide access to land and we have a number of them. They bring people together, teach valuable skills and improve access to fresh food and create pride and connection in our community. To improve existing gardens or create new ones, we would provide accessible, we would need to find accessible land and funding for tools and infrastructure that would need to support for ongoing maintenance. Partnering with schools, local organisations and residents would help ensure gardens meet the needs of the whole community. I'd also advocate for intergenerational programmes that include tamareki youth and older residents as gardens become spaces where people can connect, share knowledge, support each other with the right support. Community gardens can thrive as hubs of learning and connection for everyone in Waino Amaata.
Okay, Daniel.
Kia ora. All right. I'll wait for the camera again. And go, 59 seconds. All right. Again, I've already been working in this space. I'm a bit of a green thumb, love gardening, love community gardens. I've already helped start two community gardens, the one on Paul Crez, opposite one at a primary and the one at our house, where we utilised front lawn space. And so, yeah, community gardens are fantastic. You know, people can often sometimes underestimate the amount of work that is involved and so I'd be a big advocate for sharing information, resources. And I'm more than happy to have a coffee and a chat with anyone wanting to start one and give support and advice. So I think there's definitely a role for the Community Board to play and for the council to support through resourcing and funding potentially.
And Nohor Kaina?
Yeah, I think community gardens are incredible resources. We already know that many whanau here in Waino Amaata and around the country are struggling in terms of the cost of living and so alleviating some of that pressure by having accessible community gardens or supporting existing ones like the one at Kōkiri Marae, they have a Pātaka Kai and things like that and that kai goes back out to the community. So I think that we should really look at what we can utilise in terms of council funding, whatever funding we get for the Community Board and how do we pull together our resources, especially those like Daniel mentioned, people who are knowledgeable and know how to start community gardens and are willing to upkeep those or maintain them is incredibly important. We have a little garden at the Kohangario that I work at and so we're kind of looking at how we can utilise our parent community. So in terms of the Community Board level, we have multiple schools here, so maybe there's a way that we can collaboratively work together to help feed the community that we live in.
And Nikki.
Yeah. I'm not sure there's too much to add here. I personally love community gardens. They connect generations and more importantly, they help get our kids outside and they teach them where their kai comes from. And like Daniel has pointed out and others have pointed out, we've got some great examples of community gardens here in Waino Amaata, the garden at Pātaka Kai, the Paul Crez garden. Most of our schools are Enviro Schools and I'll just give a shout out to Adakuta Primary School because I know that the kai they grow in their garden goes back into their school lunch programme. So it's a huge, a huge, you know, circular process for those children. What I did want to add on this is that gardens, community gardens can be a great source of community resilience. We've already talked about civil defence and emergency planning. Our ability to grow kai in the area that we live in could be a huge help and we've also touched on the cost of living crisis. We know that for many whanau, they will grow food in their garden to supplement what they're able to afford at the supermarket. So the more that we can, you know, build those skills and make space available, I think that would be a great thing for us to be looking at doing.
Okay, and the last question that's in the box is letter E for electricity. Okay, and we're gonna really toss up this one here. What community board projects would you be happy to support for Community Board Grants? Al.
If I could support a project through Community Board Grants, I would focus on initiatives that bring our community together and make Waino Amaata more accessible for everyone, that could be safe and exclusive space for children and our youth, like after-school programmes and mentoring or creative hubs that we don't already have. I'd like to use prioritised projects that benefit our older residents, such as community spaces and social programmes or transport solutions that could reduce the isolation and help them stay connected. Accessibility for people with disabilities or additional needs would remain as key focus so everyone can fully participate in community life, which lots of people can't. Ultimately, the project I support would reflect what our community really needs. Every initiative should help all our whanau, young and old, feel included, supported and proud to be part of Waino Amaata.
Okay, Nohor Kaina?
Me?
No. As I said, I'm tossing up the order.
Oh, okay.
It's that keeping you on your toes.
In an ideal world, we'd support every single community project that's out there because they're all important for different reasons. I think building on from my last answer about community gardens, I think that would probably be the local community project that I'd want to support the most simply because it will help alleviate the pressure of the cost of living on our community. Kai should be accessible to everybody. And there's also other things that come into supporting a community garden, like as mentioned by other candidates. We can have, you know, teach our tamareki where their kai comes from, we can include different generations in the upkeep of that garden. There's a lot of knowledge that comes out of it. And so, yeah, I think for me, the key thing would be projects that support kai, so sustainable kai and for me, that would definitely be the community gardens.
Okay, Nikki.
Kia ora. Yeah, I'd be happy to support projects that bring people together. I think one of the things that keeps coming out of most of our answers here is around community cohesion and knowing your neighbours, having strong community and I think events that, sorry, all projects, they could be events that help to continue to build that spirit across community are really important. But equally, I would like, I would support projects that help support the local economy and maybe fill gaps that are not currently being met. So again, being in consultation with community and understanding what they need and where they need it and then helping grow local projects that support those needs.
Daniel.
Now it's my turn. Cool. Go. Right, well, I'll finish, I want to be a DB downer, I'll be a slight Daniel downer. Unfortunately, our Community Board no longer approves things that aren't climate-related for community grants. Now, that is not necessarily a bad thing, I'm all for climate and sustainability. However, it means that unfortunately this year, and I've expressed my disappointment with this approach, that fund that used to be a general community grant fund is over $200,000 underspent. And so I've been speaking up about that and just saying, look, we should be still considering a lot of great projects out there that may not have the biggest green tick, but do bring community together. So those are the kinds of things I would support, is like fellow candidates have said, things that benefit the community and bring them together. But we do need to see, if you want funding for that stuff, unfortunately, you've got to go look at all the other grants from council, not Community Board grants anymore. Um, but we do need to see, if you want funding for that stuff, unfortunately, you've got to go look at all the other grants from council, not community board grants anymore.
Okay, so let's, uh, key roll on the hard-hitting credits. And for the community boards, we only got one hard-hitting question, but we need to know where the candidates stand. What is your position on retaining Hart City Council's Mana Karangi Kita Taia Maori Ward? And Greater Wellington Regional Council's Te O Poko Iti Ikaa Maui Maori constituency? And why do you hold that position? Nohokana.
Uh, Te Na Kato, I think the simple and easy answer is yes, vote yes for Maori wards. We absolutely should keep them. It's about dedicated representation for Maori and those who are on the Maori electoral roll, they deserve to have representation that do, does exactly that. They represent them. I think it would be a loss to not have those voices at the council level because we know that Maori people are values-based, they're values-based culture and they bring that type of fakaro, uh, to the council table or to whatever it is that they're involved in. I think when we think about climate, uh, the climate, climate change, um, revitalising our taia, our waterways, our awa, those are things that come in really, really strongly with uh, Maori ward candidates and with Maori people in general. And so I think it's incredibly important that we continue to maintain them. When we think about Te Te Riti O Wa Tangi Maori, a 50% of that, and we should have representation at every level. Local and central government included.
Okay, Nikki.
Yep, uh, everything that Nohokanga has just said, yeah, I'm supportive of retaining Maori wards. Uh, it's about honouring the, uh, Te Te Riti O Wa Tangi, upholding principles of partnership and participation. Uh, dedicated Maori wards help, uh, you know, they bring Maori perspectives, Maorioranga, uh, deep community knowledge into council decision-making. Um, the, the strengths and the outcomes on issues for, you know, environmental protection, housing, transport, social wellbeing, um, guarantee, it's a guaranteed voice on decisions that directly affect, uh, affect everybody. Uh, and we should have everybody's voice at the table. Um. So yeah, I'm fully in support of keeping Maori wards. We should, uh, yeah, vote to keep them on your referendum papers.
Okay, Al.
Um, I, I strongly support the retaining of these two Maori council wards in both the councils. So we've got the Greater Wellington in our city council. So it's, um, these wards are vital because actual Maori voices are represented at local and decision, local decision-making and the perspectives, rights and needs of Tanga, Tanga Te Finawa, sorry if I've said that wrong, are heard and respected. Representation matters. It strengthens democracy and it makes our councils more inclusive and accountable to all our communities. Retaining these Maori wards also honours Ta Ta Treaty of Waitangi, I don't ever say that right, I'm sorry. And helps councils make decisions that reflect the unique culture, history and aspirations of Maori in our region. I hold this position because I believe Wainoa Mata and our wider region benefits when everyone's voice is heard and when Maori sectors are fully included, included in shaping the future of our communities. So please vote yes in the referendums.
And Daniel.
And go. Um, yes, fully support the boards. Um, uh, why? Uh, I think it's quite simple from, from my personal view. We've had Maori seats in parliament since the eighteen sixties. Um, so why not councils? Uh, if you want to get rid of one, then you should argue to get rid of all them, which I think could be starting a war to try that. Um, yeah, really simple. I think this is frankly a bit of a non-issue because of that logic. It's just they're there, they should be there, um, support them.
Okay, now let's, uh, get time for closing statements. Daniel, you get to go first.
The camera's still on me. I forgot I got a closing statement. Um, uh, I guess just vote. Um, your voice is not heard if, if you're not voting. Um, research your candidates. We're here tonight. Watch the recording afterwards. Share the recording afterwards. Uh, know your candidates. Um, yeah, democracy matters. Um, and I think some of these issues that come up, like the Maori wards, uh, sometimes try to sideline things and they take the focus off, uh, just general democracy and engagement and, and people try to take things away with rhetoric on the left and the right. Um, but just vote. Um, you can vote for me or you can vote for Noh or you can vote for Nikki or you can vote for Al. Uh, but whatever you do, uh, just get out there and vote. Um, I hope you do vote for me. I've been on the board. I've got the experience. Um, and I'll, yeah, advocate strongly for you and for Wainoa Mata. I love this place. Been here ten years. Um, raised my family here. So, um, yeah, get out there and vote and hopefully for me.
And Nohokana.
Kyura, so vote yes for Maori wards and like Daniel said, you need to get out there and vote. Voting is so important because it's how you get to have your say and it's how you get to choose people that will represent you or at least fight for you. I like to think of it as vote for, the way that you vote is you vote for people that will look after the most vulnerable within our community. So I really hope that you choose candidates that are going to represent you and represent people like your nan, your kumata, your babies, your children and people that think about what's going to happen in the future. Um, vote for me because I'm a really amazing advocate. I feel like that's so funny to say it in that way, but it's true. That's all I've ever done in the last, uh, the last ten years of my life. So if there's nothing more else, nothing else to say, vote yes for Maori wards. Make sure you vote or don't complain.
Uh, Nikki.
Uh, yeah, Kyura, um, thank you for having us here tonight and thank you to my fellow candidates for all their amazing quarterdo. Um, I completely endorse everything that's sort of already been said. Getting out and voting is the best thing that you can do in local government elections. Um, and it's really strange sitting here trying to sell myself and make a closing statement and say, this is why you should vote for me because in all of the work that we contribute to community, we're never really doing it for ourselves, for our own profile. It's always for the benefit of community. So um, I will just say that Wainoa Mata is, it's more than where I live. Uh, it's where I'm raising my family. It's where I'm trying to give back in all the ways that I can. Um, for Wainoa Mata, our strength has always been in our people and, um, I would encourage you to get to know your candidates and vote for people that um, have values that align with yours and, um, yeah, just make sure you vote.
Okay, Al.
Um, I'm not a career politician. I'm a mother and an advocate and someone who knows what it means to live with challenges. I know how hard people fight every day just to get the support they need. My priorities are clear, accessibility and inclusion for all. More support for children, youth and our, and their whanau and dignity and respect for our retired and older residents through better transport, accessible accessible spaces and stronger community connections. Good leadership starts with listening and that's what I will keep doing. I will show up, listen to your voices and work for, work hard for Wainoa Mata that is more accessible, more compassionate and more inclusive for everyone. I'm Al Abel and I'd be honoured to earn your trust and your vote. Namaha Nui, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, candidates for taking, take, uh, taking time to put your feet to the It's in the Ballot fire. Um, it's not easy suddenly doing that, but thank you for showing us the support for being here this evening. Uh, and thank you to our viewers who are watching online and to our team, uh, was it Nick who's in studio who's had a lot more additional work. Sorry for the cameras being a bit slow. The stream deck is not currently talking to XSplit. And it's also had to happen when there was a Windows update, sitting pending in the background. And, yeah, it, it definitely makes, doesn't make things work the best, um, but it's just what it is. Uh, and I would also like to thank Laura for the help that she's done for remote editing the show. And I'd also like to thank the help that, um, Stacey's put into the shows, um, and trying to make things all work here. And thank you to the Wainoa Mata community for supporting It's in the Ballot. Feel free to share this farmwide to help your voters decide which places to send their six ticks to. Uh, just a little bit of housekeeping. It's in the ballot, um, productions is an independent nonprofit organisation that is funded on smaller donations. If you'd like to help keep supporting our projects, you can sit there and head to our Give a Little page, uh, which is, uh, was it? Which is on the QR code on screen. You can also, um, head to our, uh, Eventbrite options and do Koha with, uh, was it Koha without admission to put in a direct donation into it. You can also head to itsintheballot.nz and click on donate here. We can also get our Kiwi Bank bank account number and put in direct credit, um, funds into our bank account. You can also now, as what, since we have YouTube partnership, you can also do either a super chat if we're live in the show to contribute. We can do a super thanks, which can contribute, um, if you're not watching this live. And if you would like to check out our merch, you can also buy some of our 2025 themed It's in the Ballot shirts. So we, uh, now for tomorrow, we do not have the Tafanga Nui A Taro Maori Ward Show. If you're planning to tune in at one o'clock, unfortunately, we do not have the, any candidate participations to make the show go ahead. Um, and we're sorry to the viewers of It's in the Ballot that will not be able to bring you this, uh, award for the It's in the Ballot 2025 election coverage. Uh, we'll be at four PM tomorrow for the Pokahina Lampoon Ward Show and we've got seven PM for the Pakawakawar Southern Ward Show. And you can sit there and check those out both live or if you want to come and watch in studio, we'll be at Tafaya, also known as the National Drama School on Hapsom Road, uh, literally right down the road from Newtown. So we will see yous all back at four PM tomorrow on It's in the Ballot.